Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado for May 8th, 2023. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the order? The roll of the members, actually.
Bowery Nasrbe.
Here.
Leah Dozeman. Mr. Ohm.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Here.
Councilmember Hoppy. Councilmember Weaver.
Here.
Councilmember Hulting.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, previously noticed, Councilmember Hutchinson will not be with us tonight. There are five members present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And I did hear that Councilmember Hoppy would not be able to join us tonight, and I hope to see Councilmember Dozeman come here soon. So, thank you. Counselors, in your packet you have the study session notes for April 17th and the City Council meeting minutes of April 24, 2023. Are there any changes to be noted or corrections in the minutes in the study session notes? Seeing none, the notes and the minutes will stay as presented with our thanks to the clerk. We've got a... Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we will move with the agenda as presented, and we have a couple of proclamations tonight. I would like to invite Officer Allen Fisher and Officer Kylie Fisher to join me at the podium, please.
This is a proclamation in support of National Police Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the people of the city of Wheatridge, Colorado have shared their concern and support following the tragic assault on Officer Allen Fisher, who received life-threatening injuries while on duty on April 13th, 2022. And whereas it is important to recognize and honor the sacrifice made by those who are injured or who die in the line of duty. And whereas the members of the Wheatridge Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all who work, play, and live in the city. And whereas it is important that everyone know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our police department, and that our local law enforcement agency recognizes their duty to serve our community by safeguarding life and property, by providing protection against violence and disorder, and by shielding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, over the course of the past 54 years, the Police Department of the city of Wheatridge has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which tirelessly provides a vital public service in partnership with the law-abiding members of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, and the City Council for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado, call upon all those living and working in Wheatridge and upon all of our community's patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through 21, 2023 as National Police Week, honoring law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all members of our community. I further call upon our community to observe May 15, 2023 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor those officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or who have been injured in the performance of their duty. Dated this 8th day of May, 2023, Bud Starke, Mayor. I'd like to present this to you, Officer Fisher.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for your service. Would you like to say a few words?
I was told I have to.
I'm glad someone else got to you first.
Yeah. On the way here, well, I got an email about this, but it didn't say anything about having to speak. And on the way here, my daughter asked me, "Did you... Where's your speech?" And I'm like, "What do you mean?" She goes, "Everybody has a speech, Dad." And I'm like, "I don't know..." And then she finally says, "Well, no, I think you're supposed to say like a sentence." Well, then the chief told me just a little bit ago, "Three or four sentences." And I'm like, "This is getting bigger. Maybe I should have written something down." But no, on behalf of Wheatridge Police Officers and all officers, thank you very much. To the citizens, I've been fortunate to work for Wheatridge, which I think the citizens here support the police much more so than maybe some other communities, and we really appreciate it. I want you to know that. And to the City Council, the mayor, and the city manager, you guys have been great. My 20 years on patrol here, I've seen a lot of change. And I'd say in the last 10 to 12 years, the change's been really good. It's taken some time, but this city's transforming into like a place I can't even afford to live in anymore. So, you know, but no, this has been great. And thank you very much on behalf of all the officers. We really appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Come on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to find your speech writer. That was pretty good. Okay, for our next proclamation, I'd like to invite our Public Works Director Maria DeAndrea forward to it, Jim Killie, our street supervisor, Dan Beers, our facilities manager, and Bruce Eddingtons, our facility maintenance tech. So, thank you all for being here to...
Being here tonight.
This is a proclamation in support of National Public Works Week, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives. And whereas the support and understanding and... Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, traffic signals and signs, lighting, bridges, storm sewers, drainage, and the fleet. And whereas the health and safety and quality of life of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction and maintenance are vitally important to the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas the city of Wheatridge Public Works Department responsibly manages transportation, drainage facilities, and fleet operations in a safe, efficient, innovative, and environmentally responsible manner, utilizing our dedicated, highly skilled employees and partnerships to promote a high quality of life in the city and our public areas. And whereas the 23 employees of the department comprised of operations and construction services maintain more than 133 miles of streets, 36 miles of storm sewers, 9,500 street names and traffic control signs, 37 traffic signals, 350 street and pedestrian lights, 150 vehicles and pieces of large equipment, manages and administers all construction work in the public right-of-way, oversees capital improvement programs, maintenance projects, and other related agency projects, and other critical infrastructure activities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, and the City Council for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023 as National Public Works Week in the city of Wheatridge. And I call upon all community members and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And that's a lot of work these folks do. So, thank you very much for the work that you do.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm so excited to accept this on behalf of the department. These are just a few folks behind me who represent our department so well and do such a great job every single day. We're fortunate enough to have taken on the Facilities Maintenance Division this year, and a few of those folks are behind me right now, including two of our facilities techs, John and Bruce, as well as our facilities manager, Dan Byers. And then, of course, Jim representing the streets. So, we're... I think with public works, the important thing is that if you don't notice us, then we're doing our job. So, if you can get up in the morning and get out of your driveway because the streets are plowed, you can come into a building and the heating is set right, the lights turn on, everything's working in public works. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Happy to be here. Thanks for the work. Okay.
Okay, we will now move to our public's right to speak portion of our agenda, and members of the public may come at this time and speak on any item that is not on the agenda for a three-minute period. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium, give us your first name and your last name, and if you would please give us your address, then the clerk will start the timer, and he'll have three minutes to speak. And when the green light turns yellow, time is getting out, moving past, and when it gets red, then your time is up, and if you would please conclude your remarks. If you're joining us online, we'll have an opportunity for you to raise your hand and join us virtually. I have one person signed up, Patrick Quinn. If you would please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat Quinn. I live at 3995 Moore Street in beautiful District 3, the best district in Wheatridge, I might add. I've come tonight to talk about the Citizens' Wheatridge... Excuse me, the Wheatridge Citizens' Police Academy and would like to encourage the city to keep doing things like that. That was the... One of the best things I've ever attended, eight weeks of bliss, hosted by Sergeant Bobby Dawkins, who did a phenomenal job organizing this. It was a great thing. And it just happened to coincide, I was going to say this, on the night that you all recognized the police here, who do... I have to say, after going through all this and a couple ride-alongs, I am proud of our police department. They do a phenomenal job. And I just want to give a couple of people's names on the record that I think deserve the accolades. Of course, once again, Sergeant Dawkins, who organized all this, she's outstanding. The Judge Randall on municipal court night was a very good class in showing us how and what he has to deal with. The next night, I missed a little bit of it, but that was with the community service officers. Webb and Haynes were there. And then the crime and traffic overview with Officer Taggart and Reitz, I believe was the name. I kind of missed a lot of that because I was stuck in a Parks and Rec meeting, which I enjoyed a whole lot. Our fourth week was Response to Resistance with Commander Pickett and Sergeant Brooks, who's an outstanding individual. I really liked that guy. Another night, we had an investigation overview. I was in DC that night, so I missed that one. But the Detective Slaverty and Stavall, I think is their name, I was heard did an outstanding presentation. Firearms safety overview and the firearm simulator that night was... I didn't die that night, so that was great. I enjoyed that a whole lot. Got to use the weapons. And another night, we had with the SWAT team, again with Sergeant Brooks and Pickett. And those guys really liked their toys. It's really impressive to see. But I also had a couple of ride-alongs with Sergeant Gross, Brian Gross, great individual. We hit it off pretty good because he's a race guy and I'm a race guy, so we got to drive around in a police car, which is really a whole lot of fun with him. And he showed me a lot of sites of the city that I didn't really know that they were there. Living here 30 years, it was crazy. But the next time I went on a ride-along to watch the officers interact in a... I don't want to say an incident, but a call over at the Shell Station on 44th and Kipling, to see how they interacted with an individual and watch their patience and the way they acted and all the training that we heard that they do and saw bits and pieces of it, to see it all come together. These folks are just short of amazing. They're not even short of amazing. They are amazing. It was really cool to see. And I just can't say enough about it. And I would encourage the city to continue the programs like this, Wheatridge 101, and hopefully 102. It's awesome. The red light's on, and you guys are busy tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for those great words about this program.
I forgot where to...
Okay.
Big round of applause.
Well, you don't want to forget our chief of police. Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on public's right to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now. If you are online, you may raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting, and I'll check with staff now to see if anyone's raised their hand.
We do. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brett Kelly. Mr. Kelly, you are allowed to speak now.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, if you would unmute yourself and give us your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name is Brett Kelly, and that's Brett with two Ts and Kelly, K-E-L-L-E-Y. My address is 4095 Cody Street. I just found out earlier today that there was a meeting. Some of you may have heard some things going on with regards to code enforcement, with regards to the site triangle lived on the corner of 41st and Cody. I've been having interactions with code enforcement now for... Since 2020 to trim trees back, which I've done, and I've taken some out, and I have let people know that I... My grandparents built the house in 48. I wasn't raised in it, but pretty much, and I've been there since 2002. And I know that the site triangle is a new law. I'm not arguing it or the reason for it, but I am seeing some inconsistencies with, not necessarily enforcement, but where corners are legal by the site triangle, but you still can't see oncoming traffic until you're in traffic. And I have... My second appeal will be coming up soon. I'm submitting paperwork tomorrow. I haven't brought it to too many people's attention because I was working with code enforcement to try to figure out the best way to fix it. But in 96, when curb gutter and sidewalks were improved, my grandma had portions of her property taken, and she just asked nicely if they would... City would build a landscaping area in the corner where the sidewalk and curb and gutters came together, and they obliged. And there's no record of it that I have or the city. So, I guess what I'm asking of the judge, I'm having a second hearing appeal because he said the first time it was not in on time. And I argued that I asked if the date, the time at which the clock starts is when it's posted, the citation, or whether it's received by mail certified. And I was told it was done by when it was posted, and that was over Easter when I was not home and out of town. So, I guess I'm just bringing them up so that in the future, maybe more fairness to citizens can happen, to give them time to speak up for themselves and just get more feedback as to different directions that maybe I can go with regards to my problem. Because right now, it's just removal of trees. And so, I guess my point is I'm feeling like the way the code is written is not... It's plenty clear. It's just not something that can be applied to all situations equally and fairly. And I just kind of wanted the... The time to appeal is five days, and it's calendar days. So, I think that that's difficult. There's no clarification as to whether it's when it's posted on someone's door or whether it's when it's received certified mail. It may be different.
Mr. Kelly, your time has expired. If you could please close your remarks.
Thank you. That's it. I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any further... Any further hands raised online to bring into our meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Alma Carrillo.
Okay, Ms. Carrillo, would you please give us your name and address? Unmute yourself, and we'll bring you into the meeting.
Hi, my name's Alma. I'm with Representative Pedersen's office. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person, but I just wanted to let everybody know if they're having issues with the federal agency to please contact our office. Our number is 303-274-7944. And yeah, I would just like to thank the city council for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Mr. Goff, do we have any other folks with their hands raised online?
It's all we got.
Okay. And I see no one else in the hall ready to speak, so we will close our citizens' right to speak, and we will move to our first agenda item. This is item number one. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 07-2023, An Ordnance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 7890 West 38th Avenue from Residential 2 or R2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood or MUN. This is case number WZ-23-01.
Thank you. And Mr. Goff, we have a presentation on this item?
We do. That was quick. You didn't read... You didn't read the... There was no issue statement?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't you read that?
Okay.
The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Residential 2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood for the property located at 7890 West 38th Avenue. The zone change will result in zoning that allows for neighborhood-serving uses and provides a transitional buffer between the existing residential uses and commercial uses.
Okay.
Thank you, council member.
Mr. Goff, given that issue statement, do you have a presentation on this item?
We do. She threw me off a little bit. Our planner, one, Elena Larrera, is here this evening.
Okay, please continue.
Good evening. My name is Elena Olivas Loeira, and I am a planner with the city of Wheatridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ-2301, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Residential 2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood at 7890 West 38th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheatridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located on the south side of West 38th Avenue, just west of Wadsworth Boulevard. The area to the east of the site is commercial up to and along Wadsworth and is residential to the west. The property measures about half an acre in size and contains a vacant single-unit dwelling built in 1957. This is a zoning map of the area. The subject property is currently zoned Residential 2 and is outlined in red. The site is surrounded by a mix of zoning, including R2 to the west and commercial zoning to the east, including a planned commercial development and mixed use commercial. The site is situated between low-density residential uses and commercial uses, which include two office buildings, an older strip mall shopping center, and the corner shopping center. This is a view of the subject property looking south from West 38th Avenue. It is a 1,748-square-foot single-unit dwelling. This is a view of the commercial corridor looking east from the subject property on West 38th Avenue. The applicant intends to rezone the property to allow for neighborhood-serving uses and to provide a transitional buffer between the existing residential uses and commercial uses. Should the zone change be approved, the applicant, who is also the property owner, intends to convert the existing single-unit dwelling into a childcare center, which is not permitted in R2 but is a permitted use in the MUN Zone District. The R2 district allows for single-unit or duplex dwellings. By contrast, MUN zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two. The MUN designation would provide more flexibility for lower-intensity neighborhood-serving businesses to exist and will provide standards for any possible future redevelopment. The MUN Zone District is appropriate for this segment and particularly on this property, given its size and its location, and can act as a transition between the commercial uses immediately to the east, as well as the uses on Wadsworth Boulevard and the neighborhood to the west. The site is smaller in size, is embedded between an established residential neighborhood and a commercial corridor, and the goals for the site align with the intent of the MUN zoning. This table summarizes the current and proposed zoning's development standards. Most of the proposed zoning development standards would apply if the property redeveloped in the future. Most notable differences between the two zone districts include building height, setback requirements, and build-to requirements. The design standards in MUN are strict and include architectural standards, open space requirements, setbacks, and parking As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on November 1st, 2023. 1, 2022, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. No one from the public attended the meeting. Because Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on April 6, 2023. Staff received no comments from members of the public prior to this hearing. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed MUN zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comp plan. The property is identified as a neighborhood buffer area, a designation reserved for sites located on the edges of neighborhoods. It is intended to act as a transition between low-intensity residential uses and higher-intensity commercial uses. The comprehensive plan envisions the conversion of underutilized properties to serve as a mix of residential and small-scale commercial developments. The MUN zoning designation is appropriate for the subject property by enabling reinvestment in the property, expanding the permitted uses, and by aligning the zoning with the city's goals to improve the appearance, mix of uses, property values, and overall vitality of the area. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns of the area, the MUN Zone District in this area is more appropriate for R2 in terms of allowed uses for the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to MUN is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the vision for the conversion of underutilized properties to serve as a mix of residential and small-scale commercial developments. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the property and by allowing for neighborhood-serving uses that provide a transitional buffer between the existing residential uses and commercial uses. If city council approves the request, the zone change is approved. That concludes my presentation. The applicant doesn't have a presentation, but will be available for questions, along with staff.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I would like, before we go to questions of council, to invite members of the public to speak on this. I have the applicants signed up to speak, but they certainly don't need to speak unless they would like to. But anyone else, if you are here and would like to speak on this issue, you may come forward now. If you are joining us online, if you would please raise your hand, we will bring you into the meeting.
Nobody online, Mayor.
Have anyone coming forth from the public? So we will close our public's right to speak, and we'll go to questions from council. Questions from council for staff on this. Before we close, I will, you know, what I didn't do probably on this is to open the public hearing and let me ask my attorney what I should do at this point, because I am...
You can open the public hearing and declare that the presentation made by staff be included as part of the record.
Okay. I would like to open the public hearing and declare that the presentation made by staff is part of the public record and part of the public hearing. So this is a public hearing, an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi-judicial. If you intend to speak on this item, by speaking, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this case. Okay. Sorry about that. Any, any other questions of staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2023, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 7890 West 38th Avenue from Residential 2, or R2, to Mixed Use Neighborhood, MUN, on second reading, order it published, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. Number one, Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Number two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And number three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the review criteria of Section 26-112 of the Code of Laws.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Nosler Beck.
I just wanted to say how excited I was to see this on the agenda for tonight, and that we have applicants going and re-envisioning what our city can be like to better serve everyone in the community. And I just know that even though this is in the third district, it's right across the street from the fourth, and we, we do need more childcare and places that are serving some of our younger families in and on the west side of Wadsworth. So just thanks for all the work on this.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this house belonged to the late Liz Willis, and her husband, Jack, was a Wheat Ridge Fire Chief for many years. And Ms. Willis was actually my preschool teacher at Pennington Elementary. So I think this repurposing of this property that has since been vacant into a childcare center would be wonderful in her memory. So I was also very happy to see this. And Liz Willis was a wonderful woman, and I think that this will honor her memory well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really close to where I live, and having walked by it many, many times, seeing it vacant, I'm really happy that it's going to be a daycare center. And I've had another location. I lived next to a, had a daycare facility behind my house, and it was very compatible. I think this is a great site. It has a lot of parking, easy access. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Weaver.
Just want to echo all of my, my co-members' comments, and just say I think this is the perfect transitional kind of thing that we need between residential and our commercial districts. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll
Mr. Mayor, I have a vote of six to nothing with, it seems like somebody's, oh, I see. We have two members absent.
We have two absences.
Yes, passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. Glad to see this. Thank you for bringing this forward. We will go to our second agenda item. Counselor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 08-2023, an ordinance amending Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning requirements for the dedication of public parks and sites and making conforming amendments therewith. At issue, I'm reading the "at issue," just so that everybody knows. The proposed ordinance exempts deed-restricted affordable dwelling units from the parkland dedication or fee-in-lue requirement established by Section 26-414 of the subdivision code. It also adds a definition of deed-restricted affordable dwelling units to Section 26-123 of the code.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. This is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Mr. Scott Cutler with our planning division.
Mr. Cutler.
Thank you, council. Yes, so the issue statement pretty much covered it. It's a fairly simple ordinance. It affects two parts of our code, simply creating a definition for deed-restricted affordable dwelling units, and then exempting them from the fee-in-lue requirement established by the subdivision code. So I'll give a little bit of background. This was discussed with city council on February 6 at a study session, and you all provided consensus to move forward with a code amendment exempting affordable housing from parkland dedication fee requirements. And then Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance on April 6, and unanimously recommended approval. So just to give a little bit more background, we do have a parkland dedication requirement that was established in 2014 and applied to all residential projects within the city. And developers are required to either dedicate public parkland on-site or pay a fee-in-lue. Most sites are small enough that people will pay the fee-in-lue instead of dedicating parks. And there are two exemptions in our code currently. One is for nursing homes, and one is for accessory dwelling units. And those fees are assessed based on the number of units. So for example, a 50-unit apartment building would pay about $100,000. It's about $2,000 to $2,500 per unit. Currently, there are no exemptions in our code at all for deed-restricted affordable dwelling units. And as part of the affordable housing strategy, this was one of the items that came to council's attention in that strategy, to potentially exempt affordable housing from that. So this was one of the proposed code amendments presented on February 6. This ordinance will waive all parkland dedication fee requirements for deed-restricted affordable housing. And the more important thing probably is defining what deed-restricted affordable housing is in the code. So we did create a definition that allows us to then exempt them from parkland dedication fee requirements. And that's a dwelling unit that's required to be used as an affordable housing for an income-qualified residence for specified numbers of years. And then there's also a restrictive covenant component on that property. We recognize that this is really in the early stages of our affordable housing strategy, and we likely will need to modify this definition in the future. But this is a really good starting point in order to quickly exempt some of the projects we know are in our pipeline, development pipeline, from that fee. So with that, I will take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to the public to speak on. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here in council chambers and would like to speak, you may come to the, to the podium now. And if you're joining us online, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand in the virtual format. We'll bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anyone coming forward or raising their hand, so I will close our public's right to speak and go to questions from council. Any questions? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you kind of preemptively asked the question I had coming into it, which was around sort of the development of the definition of deed-restricted that showed up in here. So thank you for acknowledging it's something that we'll be probably working on as we move forward with different strategies. One of the questions that came up for me just, first of all, I just support the in lieu of, the real issue around the park fee. But if I were developing something that was naturally meeting the definitions of affordability, and I didn't need to do any of the deed restriction stuff, could I still come in and seek a deed restriction to get some of the benefits? I mean, I know a lot of times developers come in and want the deed restriction as part of negotiating some of the benefits and packages, but is it, can it be an opt-in and not just part of a, I mean, if someone's just doing it used by rights, can they ask for deed restrictions as part of a package?
I defer a little to our city attorney on that, but I will say, this, this would apply only to formal income-qualified residents. And so someone that's doing workforce housing or cheaper market rate properties, that wouldn't fall under this definition intentionally.
And I would say that, you know, as the owner of the property that isn't subject to a deed restriction, you certainly have the right to impose a deed restriction as the owner, developer of the property. So if that's the only thing, all other things being satisfied, if that's the only thing keeping you from accessing the exemption, you can effectively self-qualify yourself by, as the owner of the property, imposing that deed restriction. It wouldn't be one necessarily that the city would have to impose as a condition of development.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Any other, any other questions before we go to a, close the public hearing and go to a vote on this motion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Nosler Beck, the motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 08-2023, an ordinance amending Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning requirements for dedication of public parks and sites and making conforming amendments therewith on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number three. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 09-2023, an ordinance approving the transfer of municipally-owned properties along Wadsworth Boulevard and from adjacent streets between 35th Avenue and Interstate 70 to the Colorado Department of Transportation. At issue, Wadsworth Boulevard is a state highway that is owned and maintained by the Colorado Department of Transportation. The city has completed the right-of-way acquisition process for the improved Wadsworth project. The next step is for council to approve the disposal or transfer of right-of-way to CDOT by ordinance.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Mr. Mark Westberg from Engineering is here this evening.
Okay. Mr. Westberg.
Okay. Are we all seeing that?
We are.
I'm new to our new format and way of doing things still. So we talked about this a little bit a couple of weeks ago, when we accepted right-of-way, when city council accepted all the right-of-way for Wadsworth. Just as a reminder, we had three full acquisitions where we're keeping some of the property that's left over. We had 62 partial acquisitions. We're transferring what's needed for Wadsworth and keeping some of the partial acquisitions we had along the side streets as city property. I showed this graphic last time. This is at 41st Avenue. This is Wad. This is 41st. We have, this was the old Raleigh-Beretos site. They're now located over here. But we, because of the impacts of adding that fourth leg, the east leg to that intersection, we had to buy the entire property. And so we did that. And then all these other colored areas you see are also properties that we acquired for the Wadsworth project. This graphic is what we're basically giving to CDOT. We're, we're, we're sort of giving them back the right-of-way they already have. We sort of wrote one big legal description for everything. And then we also have to give up a little bit of 41st Avenue that was city property, but is now within the bounds of Wadsworth. So we don't, we don't want to be the ones owning that. We want CDOT to have that. And then on that, that full acquisition, we're giving up again what's needed for Wadsworth, but keeping this remnant parcel, and then also keeping a piece over here for that extension of 41st Avenue on the east side. So this is, I picked this location because it had every possible scenario we had. So we bought a bunch of property. We're giving a lot of that to CDOT. We're also giving some of our existing right-of-way that we have, but then we're also keeping some right-of-way and keeping some of the properties we have. So if that can't be more confusing, it took us a while to get the exhibit put together and get CDOT to review it all. But we're there, so we're ready to transfer that to, to CDOT and have all that property officially be theirs and not ours anymore. So I think that's, that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westberg. Before we go to questions from council, and I know that they're going to have a lot of questions on this item, we want to invite the public to speak on this. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here, you may come and speak at the podium now. And I'll see if anyone wants to speak online. And I don't see anyone at either location, so we'll close our public's right to speak and go to all those questions that council may have for you right now. Doesn't look like we have any questions before I close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney has a correction to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dahl. I was, I was moving right along here.
You were, and I'm sorry to slow you down. In looking at the ordinance, there is just a minor correction I'd like to ask to be made as part of the motion. I had assumed that the ordinance would refer to an exhibit. And we always do. We say, as shown on attached exhibit, whatever. And to my surprise, it's probably my fault when I reviewed this, it doesn't do that. So we really do need to refer to the exhibit that was put together with such great effort by, by the staff here. And the easy way to do that, when we're ready for a motion, is on Section 1, to approve the motion per the, approve the ordinance per, per the motion that's in your packet, and then add with the addition in Section 1 of the words at the end, "as shown on the attached exhibit." And if we plug that into Section 1 of the ordinance, we'll attach the exhibit in the fullness of time, and we're good to go.
Can you please repeat that?
Point that out, where it would go in the motion, the recommended motion.
In the recommended motion, let me find that.
Okay.
in the, basically the fourth line of the motion, where it says Interstate 70 to the Colorado Department of Transportation. Let's see. With, with an amendment to Section 1, adding the words, quote, "as shown on the attached exhibit," close quote. And then you can go straight on to on second reading, et cetera. Does that work?
Can you just repeat?
Sure.
I have amendment to Section 1, adding the words...
Quote, "As shown on the attached exhibit," close quote. And then go straight on with the "on second reading" language.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I believe we're ready to go to a motion. Have I closed the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Hulteen, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 9-2023, an ordinance approving the transfer of municipally-owned properties along Wadsworth Boulevard and from adjacent streets between 35th Avenue and Interstate 70 to the Colorado Department of Transportation with the addition, with the addition to amend Section 1, adding the words "as shown in the attached exhibit" on second reading, and that it takes effect upon adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Nosler Beck.
I brought this up in the study session as well, but in us moving forward with this, I just want to make sure with the new crossings that we're going to have with some of the school closures, that we're keeping an eye towards safe crossings both during the construction and after the construction's done. So just my two cents on that.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Westberg. We will go to agenda item number four. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 23-2023, a resolution approving a major subdivision at 4,600 Kipling Street in the mixed-use commercial MUC Zone District, Case Number WS-21-05. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a major subdivision on property zone mixed-use commercial and located at 4,600 Kipling Street, which consists of the vacant land at the northeast corner of 44th Avenue and Kipling Street. The purpose is to subdivide the property into two blocks and to plat two new public streets.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Mr. Cutler's back on deck.
Okay. Mr. Cutler, please proceed.
That is not what I wanted. There we go. All right. Thank you again. This is Case Number WS-2105, which is a request for approval of a major subdivision at 4,600 Kipling Street, also known as the northeast corner of West 44th Avenue and Kipling Street. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and this presentation. Properties within the city Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. This property is located on the east side of Kipling Street, which is north of 44th Avenue and south of the I-70 frontage road. It's about 12.4 acres in size and stretches about two city blocks. It's currently vacant and surrounded by a variety of uses, mostly commercial to the north, high-density residential to the west, school to the east, commercial and residential to the south. Site is essentially part of a mega-block, which is contained within Kipling Street, 44th Avenue, Independence Street, and the I-70 frontage road. This is a zoning map in the property zone mixed-use commercial, MUC, as of 2015, which encourages medium-to-high-density mixed-use developments. Site is surrounded by a variety of zoning, including commercial one to the north and the south, planned residential development in R3 to the west, allowing high-density residential, planned commercial development to the northeast, which is part of a camper sale site, and the R2 green portion is the school property. In 2020, a concept plan was approved for the site under the MUC zoning, which contemplated two development areas, new public streets, and mixed-use development, including commercial on the north side and residential on the south side. Proposed plat corresponds with the approved concept plan, and the concept plan was provided in the attachments for reference. Subdivision plat is a technical document that removes, creates, or defines property lines, allows the city to evaluate right-of-way, and allows the city to evaluate civil construction documents. Subdivision plat does not affect the zoning or permitted uses on the property. Rather, it will enable future development already permitted by the zoning. In this case, this plat is considered a major subdivision because it dedicates two new full-width public streets, which I'll get to in just a minute, and major subdivisions require two public hearings, one at Planning Commission, who recommended approval, and city council is the final approver of this subdivision. So the first sheet contains the vicinity maps, notes and declarations, and the case history and signature blocks. General notes on this plat also will require future plats concurrent with future development to include appropriate cross-access easements. So these are the existing conditions on Sheet 2. North is to the left. You can see there are some lots already created, and then some other ones which are unplatted, which means they never have gone through a subdivision process. And then on the right, you can kind of see an existing subdivision. Sheet 3 of the plat shows the proposed conditions, and I'll show a little bit more detail in the next slides, but it will dedicate two new public streets as right-of-way, which will be called West 45th Place, kind of in the middle of the screen, and then Jellison Street on the top of the screen. And the plat will also create two blocks, Block 1, which is the north side on the left of the screen, and Block 2, which is to the south of 45th Place on the right side of the screen. And we'll also dedicate a tract. So this is a little bit zoomed in view of the north portion of the plat. Again, north is to the left. You can see Block 1 is north of the proposed West 45th Place public right-of-way, which is highlighted in red. And then there's a tract B along Kipling Street, which is required as a right-of-way dedication in order to construct public improvements, which will include a new 10-foot wide sidewalk and landscaping along Kipling Street. Currently, there's nothing there. This is a zoomed-in view of the south portion of the plat. Again, north is to the left. So Block 2 is the southern portion, which is south of the proposed 45th Place. And then Jellison Street extension is on the top of the screen, and that will align with the existing Jellison Street across 44th Avenue to the south. So you can see we're starting to create a street grid in this area where there's currently no, no streets. There is a tract A being dedicated to the east of Jellison Street for landscaping, and then you see again, public right-of-way dedication along 44th Avenue, which will allow detached sidewalks with landscaped amenity zones, which is similar to the section along the Swiss Flower Development to the southeast. And then when Block 2 develops, an access easement will be required through the site, which will link the two public streets, so there will be connected access. The dedication of the two public streets will provide the start of a street grid in this area, which currently does not have any connectivity. And dedicating these streets as public right-of-way helps to start, break up the mega-block and ensures high-quality public access into the site. We did send the application on referral to outside agencies and other city departments. Recently, Engineering found the plat to be approvable, and there are currently construction documents under review for all of those public improvements that I mentioned. Again, other districts have no objections and can serve at the developer's expense. There will need to be infrastructure upgrades for this property. We did post the property for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a 600-foot radius. We did not receive any comments for this application. Overall, staff has concluded that all agencies can serve the property, and all requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. And like I said earlier, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request on April 20th, 2023. That is all my presentation. We do have the applicant here available for questions, but they will not have a presentation tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to the public to speak on. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're in council chambers and would like to speak, you may come to the podium and speak. And please, I have one gentleman coming to the podium. If you'd please give us your first name, last name, and an address, and then you'll have three, no, we don't, we don't time these, so go ahead.
I'm Randy Kettlesen, K-E-T-E-L-S-E-N. I'm the owner of the property, formerly known as Kettlesen Campers, the RV people. We've been in business in the city of Wheat Ridge for 38 years, as most of you have grown up with us. And being the adjacent inside property owner, we're just very concerned that we don't become landlocked. Our, our piece of ground is very narrow from the north to the south, and so now that we're an interior lot between this potential development and the Pennington School, we just want to be sure that we don't end up with something for future development that wouldn't have access to. It also concerns sewer and water that is accessible. Some has been discussed that needs to be accessed on our property. Others have said it doesn't need to be. So we just have concerns as somebody who's been in the neighborhood for a long, long time that this doesn't have an adverse effect on now our tenants. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And would you give me your address? I may have heard it and not gotten it.
The business is 9850, 9870, 9880, and 9890. Service Road South, or I-70 frontage road, or 48th Avenue West. Pick your address. Thank you.
We'll be, we'll be looking for you. Thank you. Is there anyone, if you're online and would like to speak on this, please raise your hand in the virtual format, and I don't see anybody coming forward or in the city council chambers, so I'm going to close our public portion, public comment portion on this and go to questions from council. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So taking a look at this, a couple of things that come to mind for me. One is, you mentioned there's a planned 10-foot detached sidewalk that would be going along Kipling Street as part of this?
Yes, that's correct.
And I realize it's not part of the major subdivision, but I'm just curious about the site. So is that consistent with the width of the Kipling Street multi-use trail that goes from 32nd to 44th?
It is, yes.
Okay. And then the other question I have, so there, there's one, I believe, one RTD bus stop along there. Would it, would, does, do we require like pullouts since it's on an arterial for the, for the bus stop?
The application was referred to RTD, and they're actually coordinating with us to review plans for upgrading that bus stop. I don't have the exact dimensions or anything like that, but it is being coordinated with RTD.
Okay. But do, do we, for arterial projects where we're doing this type of redevelopment, do we, do we look at encouraging or requiring pullouts for transit stops?
Sounds like Mark wants to answer that one.
All right. Bring on Mark.
So typically on these major arterials like Wadsworth and Kipling, there are not bus pullouts. RTD, RTD doesn't like bus pullouts because it's hard for their buses to get back out. Sometimes they do use auxiliary lanes to sort of get out of the main flow of traffic, and then they get back on again. Eventually, Kipling will be three-laned, and then there would not be bus pullouts. But we'll, we'll continue to work with RTD to try to, you know, make those, make those things as low-impact as possible. Right, right now, the bus is going to stop when all the traffic stops, and so there's no real impact of having the bus stop in traffic, because traffic is stopped on Kipling often.
Okay. So just, just as we look at that, like I see the usage of 40, we get a lot of transit usage on 44th there, and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic of people accessing transit at 44th and Kipling. So there's, you know, just being mindful of like, there's a lot of pedestrian access trying to get to transit. So when, when we're looking at designing those bus stops, also ensuring that they don't create conflict between people waiting for the transit and people who are walking and biking, like we have a lot of that conflict on 44th Avenue. So just want to encourage that we're making it safe and easy for everybody there.
Having the sidewalk detached should help that, because it'll be a pad by the street in that sort of amenity zone for the people to board and off-board on the bus, so that'll help reduce some of that conflict on the sidewalk itself for people that are walking north and south.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions. First, you said that, so the two streets will sort of come in like this, but I imagine, sort of piggybacking on, on Counselor Hulteen's question, that people will be walking through the site rather than going to the corner and walking up if they're trying to get to 46th, you know, to the I-70 location. Is there sort of thought about how there will be flow-through? You sort of talked about how there would be connectivity eventually between those two streets, or would they be dead ends for now?
As part of this, they would be dead ends, but any future development would be required to have...
To create.
To create that connection.
Okay. And would that connection be private, or would it be a public street?
It would be on private property with a public access easement.
Okay. So we would deal with the flow-through at a later point?
Correct, yes.
Okay. My other question is just for the, the person who came in and asked about the, the Kettleson site. Can you answer some of those, the questions regarding sewer and things like that that were requested?
Maybe Mr. Shipton. Can you speak to that?
Good evening, council. Jim Shipton with Point Consulting. My address is 8460 West Carroll Avenue, Littleton, Colorado, 80128. So we've been working with the Clear Creek Water and Sanitation District, looking at a number of options on how we could both provide our sanitary sewer connections and making some long-term improvements to the wider district to accommodate this project. But the current thought process is that there is an easement sanitary sewer that runs east-west along the Kettleson property. To make that connection, we acquired a small easement on the hotel property to the north of us, and we will make a connection there and, and provide sanitary sewer for our project.
So it runs along the property line, or it runs through the property?
Within our project, it'll primarily run north-south within our own property, but the hotel site to the north of us with a, with a small connection across the hotel property.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Additional questions for council on this? Counselor Dozeman.
So after we approve a subdivision and plat, this would be administrative, correct? So it wouldn't come before council to, to determine any kind of...
That's correct, unless there was another rezoning or something, it would, site plans would be administrative review.
And what kind of, like, design would, would they have to adhere to in this corridor?
They're under the mixed-use commercial zoning, so there's architectural, parking, landscape requirements of that zone district.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Cutler, I, just to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on this, the two, these two streets that are being dedicated during the, during the construction of this project, would those, would those streets be constructed?
They would, and, and actually, to that point, they would have to be constructed prior to additional construction on site in order to allow access to that Block 1.
Okay. And then you said that those streets were going to be connected. Will they be connected on the interior of this site during the construction of the project?
The, the right-of-way actually won't connect right now, because they would have to connect through other properties that are not part of this project. But with future construction on Block 1, the southern block, they would be required to connect those streets with an access easement in order to allow pass-through traffic. So they're not totally dead-end streets.
Okay. So they would be, so the connection of those would be dependent upon the, the, another property owner developing their property and then continuing the road network through this area?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Are there any further questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? I'm going to close the public hearing, and may I have a motion on this? Counselor Dozeman.
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-2023, a resolution approving a major subdivision at 4,600 Kipling Street in the mixed-use commercial zone district for the following reasons. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Sections 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with the subdivision regulations in Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Four, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense, and with the following conditions. One, a subdivision... One, a subdivision improvement agreement shall be required to be recorded with the plat outlining the developer's and owner's current and future obligations to construct public and onsite improvements to allow development to proceed. And two, future plats shall be required to create the necessary onsite easements within each block to be coordinated with future development. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Five. Councilor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 10-2023, An Ordinance Amending Articles 1 and 4 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the City's Subdivision Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments There With at Issue. The proposed ordinance makes necessary updates to Articles 1 and 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code, specifically to modernize and clean up portion of the city's subdivision requirements. These updates include changing incorrect or outdated cross-references, adding modern terminology, clarifying existing requirements, updating application requirements, and removing sections of the code that conflict with the current subdivision regulations. The ordinance clarifies when owners' associations are required and the obligation of those associations, and clarifies requirements for drainage and irrigation facilities.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading. It is not quasi-judicial. This is to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Councilor Hulteen, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2023, An Ordinance Amending Articles 1 and 4 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the City's Subdivision Requirements on First Reading. Order it published, public hearings set for Monday, May 22, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Weaver. Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Six. Councilor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 11-2023, An Ordinance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Sim Street, a Public Right-of-Way. At issue, the city owns an isolated strip of real property as right-of-way that is 24 feet by 165 feet located along the east side of 4455 Sim Street. When the property was acquired by Jefferson County in 1955, it was intended as right-of-way for a future street extension. Community development has determined that the parcel does not serve a public purpose because an extension of Sim Street is not practical at this location.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2023, An Ordinance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Sim Street, a Public Roadway. Order it published, public hearings set for Monday, May 22, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it takes effect immediately after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. This will bring us to Agenda Item Number Seven. Council, Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve appointment of representatives to the 2023 Community Partners Grant Program Committee. At issue, the purpose of creating the 2023 Community Partners Grant Program Committee is to provide an additional opportunity for residents to participate in the budget process. The committee gives the residents the opportunity to weigh community needs with available resources and provide recommendations to City Council.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We don't, other than the fact that we did receive, we had six, one, let's see, one, one, two, three, four, five, six vacancies on the board, and we did receive five applications, and those applications are in your packet with their names. We just need motions for each of those, those nominations.
Okay. And a question for our attorney. I had sort of formatted this that we would take a, a motion on the slate.
Yes, there's nothing wrong with doing that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on the slate of candidates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Jerry DiTulio, or District 1, Geneva Fox, District 1, Brooke-
I'm sorry, Mr. Stites, don't may interrupt, just the ones in-
Oh, okay. Yep. Okay, sorry about that.
Just the ones in bold?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I move to appoint Geneva Fox, District 1, Dan Grave, District 2, Stephanie Tanner, District 3, Diana Lopez, District 3, and Alexander Goldsmith, District 4, to the 2023 Community Partners Grant Program Committee, term to expire after 2025 budget recommendations are presented in 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Hulteen.
I voted on it, one green button. I just want to thank everyone who serves on this committee. This is just such an important committee, and I just am always really proud and grateful that we do this as a city. And I, I know from friends who've served on this committee, there is no better way to get to know who we are as a community and the organizations, what they do, who they serve, and the impact they have. So it's, it's a lot of time, it's pretty intensive, but it's, it's a great way as a volunteer to get to, get to know our city better and do a great service to our city. So I just want to thank everyone returning anew for, for your service on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the appointments have been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Eight. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Be happy to, Mr. Mayor. This is Resol, Resolution Number 24-2023, A Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation Regarding Constructing a Shared Use Path on the West Side of Wadsworth Boulevard Between 32nd and 35th Avenues for the Amount of $7,500,000. At issue in 2022, the city was awarded funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments Transportation Improvement Program to construct a shared path along the west side of Wadsworth Boulevard between 32nd and 35th Avenues. Addition improvements at, improvements at the intersection of 32nd Avenue are planned in cooperation with the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, that were included in the funding. The funding includes both federal and state funding.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Mr. Mark Westberg is here again, and just, just for council's knowledge, the next three items, including this one, are actually very similar. So hopefully Mr. Westberg could give a, one, one presentation for all three. Can you do that?
I'll have Jordan do the-
Okay, okay.
Just so you guys don't have to listen to me for so long. So this is for the Wadsworth path, and it is located right there. The green line going east-west on the screen is the 32nd Avenue bike lanes that exist currently. The purple lines on either side of 32nd are the sidewalks that were built by the Corners Development on the north, and then on the south was a project we did, what we call the Wad's Trail Project. We did that back in the mid-2010s. And then all the stuff that's dashed is all the stuff that's going to be built by the current Wadsworth project. So this is closing a critical gap. We'll show a couple of pictures of why this project is so important. Council actually gave us direction earlier, I believe last year, to pursue a project along this side of Wadsworth between 32nd and 35th. And a few weeks later, the Dr. Cog tip application process started, and we submitted, and we were awarded a grant. So council authorized about a million dollars in funding to, to move this project forward. So what we're going to do, and that was just basically for an attached sidewalk along there, it was a very bare-bones approach, but with having a grant, we decided to, we'll just call it go-for-broke and match the project to the north that, for the current Wadsworth project. So we're looking at a 10-foot-wide detached shared-use path. We have some challenges to there, so we're not sure if we'll be able to do the, the eight-foot width and have all the landscaping that we're doing up north, or if we'll have to shrink that down to more like a four-foot width for that amenity zone, for that detached area, and have it be paved like we're doing at the north end of the current project. We're also going to replace the traffic signal at 32nd Avenue, CDOT. Whenever things happen, I just call CDOT and ask them if they're doing things, and they were planning on replacing the signal. And so we've incorporated that signal replacement into our project because CDOT cares a lot more about bikes and pets than they used to, but they probably don't care as much as we do. So we'd like to manage that project and get all the things that we'd like to have, like bicycle detection and all those things for the, the travelers on the 32nd Avenue bike lane. We're also going to have public amenities, including lighting and where we've got those wider portions of the zone, the native landscaping. The picture that's shown on the screen is the northwest corner of 32nd and Wadsworth, and the accommodations at that northwest corner, the, the things being hidden, I'm just going to move, I don't think I can, sorry about that. The accommodations for folks that can't, that are not able to walk across streets are just deplorable here. There's no ramps, there's, there's actually the one crosswalk sends you right where the inlet is, so if you're not paying attention, you could slip a foot into there. So we're going to completely rebuild this intersection. The push buttons on the signal pole don't meet requirements, and you've actually got to cross over a curb to get to them. Having lived in the neighborhood just west of here, I use this often, and even for those of us that are not a little bit impaired by any means, it's not easy to get across this intersection. So we hope to get all four corners of this intersection where everyone who walks, rolls, and otherwise travels will be able to safely do that. So that's our goal and our reason for wanting to do that, that intersection. So our new project is not a million dollars, and a million dollars honestly wasn't enough we thought to even do our former project, but it was enough to get us started. It's now seven and a half million dollars, and that's because we're rebuilding the intersection, we're doing the detached sidewalk. We've got to go through now environmental processes and right-of-way acquisition through the, the federal process. So all of those things cost us some money, but we're getting a six and a half million dollar grant from the Jeffco Subregional Forum through the Dr. Cog process, which is 87% of the cost. CDOT is going to chip in the $700,000 they were going to spend on upgrading the traffic signal equipment at that location. So our share is only 300 grand. So we, we think we've made a, made a pretty good deal on this one, that we're getting a seven and a half million dollar project for the city's cost of only $300,000. So that's all I've got for present, oh, and sorry, one more thing. This is on the north, southbound lanes of Wadsworth on the west side, looking up the hill to where the Rocky Mountain Ditch crosses. It's very steep through here, and it's dirt, and there used to be a tree, you can see the stump still that kind of leaned out over the road that really made it almost impossible to walk here. But you can see from the, the social path that people do take this route. We hope to make it just a whole lot better for them.
Thank you, Mr. Westberg. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. But I don't see anyone raising their hand right now, and so we'll close. Our public's right to speak and go to questions from council. Any questions from Mr. Westberg? Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. I'm so excited to see this moving forward, and I, and I want to just quickly thank the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team for their advocacy on this, and they didn't just participate here, they actually showed up at the, at the meeting where the Dr. Cog funds were being considered by Jeffco. So thank you, local advocates, for your good work, as well as staff's great work getting, getting money and putting it together. My actual question is, so the, the, the work on the actual intersection itself, are we looking at using green paint for bike conflict zones through there?
We'll, we'll work through that. I know there's, at least my knowledge of that, is there, there are some folks that advocate for the green paint, some folks are not big fans of the green paint. So we'll work through that as we go through the design process. We're going to be hiring consultants to help us do all this, and we'll make sure they've got a very strong bike, ped advocate, or, you know, design team together, because this, this really is going to be a, the, the traffic signal replacement's not a big deal to me. It's all about the bikes and pets on this one, so we're going to make sure that they've got a very strong team of folks to, to help us through all those choices that we've got.
Great. And then if at all possible, I just want to register, when it comes time and the, the construction's actually happening, just west of that intersection, the, the striped bike lane on 32nd Avenue is, is really, really narrow, and, and to me, to the point where it's not actually a bike lane because it's, it's like two feet, which actually has you riding in traffic and not in the lane. So I would hope that we could maybe take a look at just making sure that leading into that intersection, we have like properly, properly striped, and if it's not big enough to be a bike lane, look at other treatments for that to, to-
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll be very conscious of scope creep, but we do intend to really look at that intersection and everything that sort of leads to it, to a point, and we'll do all that we can to, to make sure that bikes can get through there safely. I think right now, we sort of have the bikes as a share-o situation as they approach the intersection, so they're sort of in that right turn lane, at least on the, on the westbound traffic. So we'll try to get those dedicated bike lanes through the entire intersection as a part of this process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this, questions on this issue? I want to say that I sit on the Dr. Cog Board, and I was really happy when staff brought this forward. I never thought we'd be able to afford this project, but this will be a real, a real change changer, I think, for, for pedestrian and bike traffic through the center of town. So thank you very much.
You'll be able to travel from 26th to I-70, all the way through Wheat Ridge, on wide multi-use paths when we're all done with the current project and this project. So that's, that to me is pretty exciting.
Okay, thank you. If there's no, no more questions, Councilor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-2023, A Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental, an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation Regarding Constructing a Shared Use Path on the West Side of Wadsworth Boulevard Between 32nd and 35th Avenues in the Amount of $7,500,000.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilor Stites. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a big thank you to staff. This is kind of one of those blah moments where, you know, we were, as a city council member, I was expecting a lot less, a lot, lot less, and, and the fact that we're getting a lot more, but it's costing the city a lot, lot less, wow. What a great job, and thank you to everybody on, on council that supported this, and the add adds. This is, I'm really looking forward to it, to have that kind of connectivity. I, I have a member of my family that, at one point, was trying to go down that path, and she said, I, I can't do it, it's dirt, it's not safe, and I said, yeah, we need to work on that. So I'm really proud that the city's doing this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Nine. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 25-2023, A Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation Regarding Construction, Constructing Bicycle Facilities on 32nd Avenue Between Xenon and Zinnia Streets in the Amount of $1,000,000. At issue in 20, in 2022, the city was awarded construction funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments Transportation Improvements Program to construct an extension of bicycle lanes along 32nd Avenue from Xenon Street under I-70 West to Zinnia Street. The project will improve safety along the popular 32nd Avenue bicycle route and provide multimodal connections that are currently lacking under I-70. The funding includes federal funding, including ARPA funds, which will only be used for construction phase of this project. CDOT administers the funding, so an intergovernmental agreement needs to be executed that outlines the various properties, or parties, responsibilities, summaries, and funding sources, and details the requirements of the funding sources.
Thank you. This will be a resolution to council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, I think we have a presentation on this?
We do have a separate presentation. Just to clarify, I'm sorry, I was, it was probably confusing. These three items are similar only in the fact that their IGAs were CDOT for the, to accept the funding for the projects, but the three projects are definitely distinct and different. So we need three separate presentations. So Jordan Jeffries is, is here for this one.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries.
Thanks. So this project is a Dr. Cog tip grant award winner as well. For those of you who were here at the study session last Monday, we talked about this project a little bit- we talked about this project a little bit at the end of the Young Field Corridor project. The same consultant is doing the design for us on this project, David Evans and Associates. So here you see the scope of the project. The green is new bike lanes. And the yellow are where we have existing bike lanes that we will be improving to some extent, either widening or providing a little bit of buffer. So new bike lanes extend effectively from just west of Xenon Street all the way over to Clear Creek Drive. But the project does extend all the way to Wright Court. As, as you're probably aware, this is a very popular bike route for cyclists. It extends all the way from Denver to Golden. And we've gotten a lot of feedback that casual riders and families aren't really comfortable taking this route, particularly under the bridge. You'll see, there's a lot of very enthusiastic cyclists. And, and people who are in spandex, really advanced cyclists who take this. But, but families and casual riders really are, are a little reluctant to take it. So we're going to widen the road under I-70 and provide full bike lanes. This also provides connectivity to Clear Creek Drive, which has new bike lanes that extend all the way up to Clear Creek Trail and, and provide connectivity to all those trails up there. So you can see in the picture there, 32nd Avenue in this vicinity is a little more congested than 32nd Avenue to the east and west. Under the bridge, it's pretty narrow. You can see in the bottom picture, a little bit of the westbound road. There's just not a lot of room. So where a lot of the cost comes from in this project is dealing with the area under the bridge, widening the road, moving the curb, removing some of that slope paving, and probably redoing part of that wall there. So this project also, we received an $890 grant, or $890,000 grant, of subregional funds. No, I went way back there. My apologies. And the city is putting up $110,000, $110,000 that will be paid for with urban, urban renewal bonds. So that's all I have for a presentation. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from council, we'll open it up to the public. I have no one signed up to speak. But if you'd like to speak and are here in council chambers, you may do so now. Or if you are joining us online, please raise your hand. And I don't see anyone coming forward either way. So we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just on that, on my bike on Saturday. I've taken that many, many times. My, my biggest concern is as I'm heading westbound, going underneath, there's vehicles that are in that right lane, and they're wanting to, to go north to get on that on-ramp. How is that going to get configured so that, that can, you can safely transition? Because it's, it's tough when you're, when you're biking, you're kind of looking on your shoulder, and a car's trying to turn to right, and you're trying to keep a straight line so that, for that interaction.
Yeah, that is one of the difficult areas in this project. We're working through that right now in conceptual design. What makes it challenging is you aren't allowed to have a bike lane to the right of a right turn lane. So at some point, you have to transition that bike lane to the left of the right turn lane. So we're looking at a couple of options there, where we either have a continuous right turn lane, or at some point after, to the west of the bridge, the bike lane would transition, and it'd be kind of a dashed bike lane, where you transition to the opposite side of that right turn lane. So that, that's definitely something we're looking at and recognize as a, as a hazard.
That, that sounds good, thank you. Additional questions before we go to a motion? Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Mayor Protim Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 25-2023, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Colorado Department of Transportation regarding constructing bicycle facilities along 32nd Avenue between Xenon and Zinnia Streets in the amount of $1 million.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Holtine. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 10. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 26-2023, A Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding constructing a pedestrian bridge, plazas, and multi-use trail extending south from the Wheat Ridge Ward Station in the amount of $9,650,000. At issue in 2022, the city was awarded construction funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments' Transportation Improvement Program to construct a pedestrian bridge over the G-line tracks, plazas at either of the bridge, and a multi-use trail extending south to the I-70 frontage road north. The funding includes federal funding, including ARPA funds. CDOT administers the funding. So an intergovernmental agreement needs to be executed that outlines the various parties' responsibilities, summarizes the funding sources, and details the requirements of the funding sources.
Thank you. This will be a resolution to the council, it is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, staff presentation.
Mr. Westburg.
Mr. Westburg.
One, one more tonight for me on this one.
Okay.
But stay tuned, we've got two more that we hope to get awarded next week by Dr. Cog that we'll come back and see you again in several months. So this is what CDOT calls, because they just don't know what to call anything, but they call it the Ward Multimodal Project. So we just call it the Ward MM. It's sort of our new nomenclature for this project. We've been, we've been talking about this with council for a long time now. We put things on pause during COVID, and then we had restarted them using the, the renewal Wheat Ridge bond funds. And our previous community development director had this brilliant idea to submit this project for, for a Dr. Cog grant so we can use those renewal Wheat Ridge funds to, on other projects. And lo and behold, it was the highest-scoring project in round two of, of the TIP this year. So just to get everybody oriented, I-70 is now at the bottom of the screen. Ward Road's over here on the left. This, this graphic's just really busy. The railroad tracks are right there. We are going to build a trail that connects the I-70 frontage road north, or 40th, I don't know, we, we have several names for this, right? To get us up there. And then there'll be a ped bridge over the tracks with a couple of plazas. We are progressing along with this project. We had, we had gotten to conceptual design 30% plans or so when we put it on pause. So we had to sort of reset with, with things once we restarted. And, and we are imminently going to be completing our initial environmental work and our 60% plans to submit those to CDOT and get that whole federal process started, along with the federal right-of-way process. So this project, the funding on this project will be going only towards construction, as it will be on the project that, that Jordan just relayed to you. We're doing all the other stuff with renewal Wheat Ridge funds. But this will be for construction of this one. So we've got a pedestrian track over the bridge, bridge over the tracks. We've got a trail connection from that bridge, the area south. We've got plazas on either side that'll have some landscaping and lighting. Lots of native landscaping, again, is our, is our sort of new sustainability thing we're trying to do. And on the trail, there's going to be a little resting area. The trail's got a lot of up and down to it, just because of the slope it's going to be on. So we're going to have a little area on top where you can, you can sit and see, and hopefully be able to like, look and see like, almost all of Western Wheat Ridge from up there. The views from the pedestrian bridge, because it's going to be like 30 some odd feet up in the air, are going to be incredible of the, the entire front range and then back towards downtown. So we should probably just charge tickets for that. We think this is going to be $9.6 million. The grant was for $8.3 million. So that $8.3 million that was renewal Wheat Ridge funds is now freed up for other projects within that I-70 Kipling URA boundary. So the city's share on this for the construction is going to be about $1.3 million. And again, I'm just available for any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Westburg. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. But if you're here as a member of the public, you may do so now, coming to the podium. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll close that portion and go to questions from council. Mr. Westburg, do you have a sort of an estimated timeframe that we might see construction sort of happening?
The, the federal process is lengthy, and we have to sort of start over on our right-of-way part of that. So once we sort of start right-of-way, it takes about a year. So we'd probably be looking at, at probably the fall of '24 for going out to bid and doing those things, and either starting construction at the end of '24 or first thing in '25. So we'll see how that plays out. But, and we do have to spend about a million more dollars on right-of-way, we think, because of going through the federal process, instead of trying to do some swapping of things. But we still, we still saving like $7 million for other projects. So we're, we're really excited about this one, too.
Okay. And, and do you think our budgeting on this is, is adequate? We've got enough funds in the, in the kitty here to make it happen?
Yeah, I took what we had and increased it by a fairly large amount to account for the federal part of it, with David's baking wages and all the Buy America stuff and all those things that we don't have as a part of the city project. So I, I think we're going to be all right, depending on what, what the world does in the next year and a half.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 26-2023, A Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding constructing a pedestrian bridge, plazas, and a multi-use trail extending south from the Wheat Ridge Ward Station in the amount of $9,650,000.
Second.
Is that Mr. Ohm? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 11. Counselor Holtine, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 27-2023, A Resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $308,627 for the purpose of making a payment to Excel Energy to underground the existing overhead electric lines to allow for the construction of the Wheat Ridge Ward Station pedestrian bridge. At issue, in order to construct the pedestrian bridge over the G-line tracks, the city needs Excel Energy to underground the existing overhead electric lines in the vicinity of the proposed bridge. Excel requires a deposit for the estimated cost of the undergrounding work prior to beginning the design. Since the amount is over $75,000, council needs to approve the payment.
Thank you. This is a resolution to the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Mr. Westburg, once again.
Okay, you're up at bat again, Mr. Westburg.
I wrote a lot of council action forums in this last cycle. So this is, this is again the Wheat Ridge Ward Station area. This is the station itself here. The trail will be running down here. The plaza area is going to be sort of this triangular area here. And the bridge is going to cross right here. And there's, if you've been out there, in addition to all of the, the lines that RTD has for their commuter rail, there are some big transmission lines that run along here that are right in the way of the bridge. We had looked at the option of going up and over, but they would have been extremely high poles for that. And so, and, and with us having the renewal Wheat Ridge bond funding available for this one, we decided to go underground with it. We had, we had actually come to council last fall to do the exact same action for about $189,000. But as they, and that was sort of the initial thing to get Excel started. As they got into the design, they, they run into some complications that drove those costs up by 120 grand. And we also went a little farther. So they have to go at least 800 feet when they do an undergrounding. And we're starting at basically the west end of the plaza area. And with this project, we're just going to take it all the way to the city boundary on the east side. So we won't have any, any of that overhead transmission line on the south side of the tracks for about this 1,600 or feet to 2,000 feet, which we think is going to help maybe these properties here possibly be a little riper for redevelopment, because they won't have this giant power line next to them. It'll be underground at that point. So we thought this is a real opportunity to go ahead and, and just sort of take every, care of everything from the, from the west end of the plaza all the way to the, the city boundary line with, with Arvada. So that's really all I've got. The exact same action council took last fall. It's just for $120,000 more.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, we'll go to comments from the public. I don't know if anyone signed up to speak. But once again, if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. If you'd like to raise your hand in the online format, we will bring you in. But no one's doing that, so we will go to questions from council. Counselor Ohm.
Could you just explain the minimum 800 feet?
It's just a requirement they have when they, when they drop their lines and then come back up again. They've got to be underground for 800 feet minimum to sort of make it worth, worth the while to get that, that distance. Again, it landed us just on the west side of Tabor Street. And because of all the connections to the businesses there and across the street, it, it just made a whole lot of sense to try to take that all the way to the city boundary. It was really, it was really difficult to, to try to land and come back up on the west side of Tabor with all the traffic signal poles and everything else that was there. And so in collaboration with Excel, we just extended that boundary to that, to the east side of the city boundary.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Westburg, are, are the businesses along that corridor where the lines are, are, the primaries are undergrounded, do they get new underground service to their?
They'll have, yeah, they'll have to replace that. At, at some point, they'll have to come back up into those businesses. For the, for the business on the west side of Tabor, it's going to be a little bit challenging. The Excel guys were a little befuddled by the way some of those connections were made for all those multiple buildings they have along there. So there'll be some work to, to make all that happen. But, but we will keep their power in, in service.
Okay, so that'll be cleaned up and, and safe and new.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, Counselor Holtine, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 27-2023, A Resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $308,627 for the purpose of making a payment to Excel Energy to underground the existing overhead electric lines to allow for the construction of the Wheat Ridge Ward Station pedestrian bridge.
Second.
Second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 12. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve an appointment to the Planning Commission. At issue on April 13th, 2023, Melissa Antol from District 3 resigned from the Planning Commission effective immediately. The vacation, or the vacancy was posted for a term of one week on the City of Wheat Ridge website and promoted through various channels from April 17th through April 24th. Applications have been compiled for council's review so that that seat can be filled.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. Mayor Protim Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Patrick Quinn to the Planning Commission, term to expire March 2nd, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Melissa Antol for her number of years on the Planning Commission. She's been fantastic on there, and she's a great District 3 resident. So we appreciate her. And we appreciate Patrick Quinn for stepping up. And hopefully we can find somebody to fill the seat on the parks.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the appointment has approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 13. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to, at, motion to award contract and approve subsequent payment of $300,000 to Mid-America Pool Renovation Incorporated for a lap pool refinishing at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. At issue, the lap pool surface finish at Wheat Ridge Recreation Center has reached the manufacturer recommendation for refinishing to maintain a safe aquatic environment. The lap pool needs to have a refinishing product installed.
Thank you. This will be a, a motion to the council, it's not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, staff presentation on this item?
Yes, Karen Adorno, our Parks and Rec Director is going to.
Okay, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The issue is pretty straightforward.
The issue is pretty straightforward, and you may recall, we talked about this during the budget process. We budgeted for recreation facilities in the Conservation Trust Fund. We have a little over $600,000 budgeted for all of our projects. In this particular project, we budgeted $280,000 for the lat pool resurfacing at the Recreation Center. It came in at $300,000, but we do have the flexibility to cover that additional $20,000 in that line item in the Conservation Trust Fund.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I will invite the public to speak on this. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand, and we'll let you speak. No one is coming forward, so I will go to questions from council on this item. Seeing none, Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award contract and approve subsequent payment of $300,000 to Mid-America Pool Renovation Incorporated for lat pool refinishing at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
As someone who moved to Wheat Ridge because she was swimming here for years before she lived here, I'm really excited that the pool's getting resurfaced. So yay reinvestment in our aquatics, and Godspeed to the contractor. And I hope the pool is not closed any longer than it needs to be.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 14, our last agenda item. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 28-2023, a resolution approving amendment to an agreement with the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District regarding Phase 2 of the improved Wadsworth project. At issue, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District was approved by city council in February 2021, replaced the district's sanitary sewer mains and other facilities during Phase 1 of the improved Wadsworth project. An amendment to the IGA is required to replace and upgrade the district's sanitary sewer facilities in Phase 2 of the improved Wadsworth project. The city will be reimbursed by the district for its portion of the work.
Thank you. This will be a resolution to the council, not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
No additional presentation, but Maria DeAndrea is our Public Works Director, is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, I'll invite the public to speak on this item. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. And once again, if you're joining us online, you may raise your hand. And I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll go to questions from council. Seeing none, Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 28-2023, a resolution approving amendment to an agreement with the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District regarding Phase 2 of the improved Wadsworth project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the resolution has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our agenda items for tonight. Let's see where we're going. We're going back to the agenda here. And I believe we will go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Unfortunately, the city's application to DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs Transformational Homelessness Response Grant, was not awarded during their first round of funding. That does not mean it's not going to get awarded, but they did award over $37 million to different entities across the metro area. We, the city did submit an application in partnership with Ed Water and Golden for transitional housing opportunities for persons experiencing homelessness. So we're hoping the second round applications are due June 15. We don't have to reapply, but we'll hear sometime after that if we get some funding. The city was, or I was recently approached by, I think maybe a couple of you, by the Lutheran Medical Center Foundation concerning some naming opportunities for their new hospital. They are, they have a fundraising campaign underway with naming opportunities anywhere between $10,000 and $2 million. And the foundation is currently matching donations between $25,000 and $100,000. So would like to get direction from the council tonight, if you'd like a presentation from the foundation at some point, to hear about their naming opportunities. We could get something scheduled for a study session. Need more information, or would you like a presentation from the foundation leadership? Ms. Hulteen?
I have a.
Sorry, Mayor.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I mean, it's interesting. Is it something that we could get a packet of information on and then decide if we want a study session on it?
Sure. They left me a packet. We could get additional copies, and we could distribute those, and then wait to hear back from you.
Sound reasonable? Okay, let's move to that fashion.
We'll do that. And just as a reminder, the Action Center is holding its 20th Annual Charitable Event this May 18. The city has a table for sponsorship. If you're interested in attending, please let me know. I know I've heard from a few of you. And lastly, I won't steal the mayor's thunder, but I think we have some good news on some legislation. I'll let him give an update. He's been working very hard on that, so I'll leave that to you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goff?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to elected officials matters. We'll start with our clerk.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nosler back.
I think I've said this a few times now, but Wilmore Davis has their final big goodbye party on May 10 from 5 to 7. So that's this week. Come and join us. If you have some kind of connection with Wilmore Davis, you can visit their website and or their Facebook page and share a story or photos, and we're inviting the entire community to come in and join us for that. And then also wanted to just mention that the school board is starting some conversations about some of the secondary schools, so like Everett and Wheat Ridge High School. And they are starting those discussions at a board meeting tomorrow evening. So I know I'm going to pop by and just make sure that we make sure the schools in our community, they're hearing from us. And I encourage everybody to come in or write into the school board to just make sure that we, make sure that the school district knows how much we love our, love our schools. And then the last piece is that the Wheat Ridge Piranhas are swimming like crazy for spring training, and they are getting ready to start their summer season. And you can register online at WheatRidgePiranhas.org. And I think that our first meet will be June 3, and practice starts at the rec center May 22. And then we move over to Anderson Pool for early morning freezing cold practices after Memorial Day. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things. So first of all, I just want to say congratulations to the Wheat Ridge Young Men Swim Team. They just took the championship and have several really phenomenal swimmers who are competing at state. And I even heard a rumor that one of them is being considered for the Olympics team. So it'd be fun to invite them to come up here and be recognized like we've been doing this year. So congratulations to them. And then the, it's a couple of weeks out, but it's never too early to get it on your calendar. June 1 through 4 is the Jefferson County Library Foundation's big old sale at the Jeffco Fairgrounds. And if you like books, it's a sweet opportunity to pick up a lot of books. I've gone a couple of times, especially if you've got kids, you have a lot of really affordable kids books, and you literally can like stuff bags for pennies on the dollar. So I really encourage everyone to go check out that book sale. And then I just kind of, I just want to reflect that we just powered through an incredible agenda tonight. And when you look at the whole of what we discussed, it's just really exciting, the investments we're making in ourselves as a city, and that we've done that through amazing staff and good governance and support from our community. And I know not all councils across the state are having agendas like we were able to accomplish tonight. So I just really want to recognize that none of that just happened in the last couple of weeks. This is several years of good planning, good policy, phenomenal staff, good governance, and support from our citizens. So I think tonight's a benchmark of how we're doing as a city, and I feel pretty good about it.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the community that our 54th Annual Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival is coming up in August. And if you would like to volunteer, we're of course looking for volunteers and for participants in the parade. So you can go to thecarnationfestival.com and sign up there, register for the parade. And so the festival will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, August 11 through the 13. So we're really looking forward to having the community back out and celebrating the incorporation of Wheat Ridge. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Counselor Weaver.
Nothing tonight, other than winning with all the great stuff tonight. Thank you all for the presentations, and it's great to be in Wheat Ridge. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very fortunate to have a local neighborhood farmer that has vegetables for sale and honey for sale, and just want to say support, support your local farmers in your neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Friday, I had the opportunity to go to Happiness Gardens and attend the dedication of the Food Forest there. And I was there with Director O'Donnell and I guess several other people from the Wheat Ridge staff and the Wheat Ridge community. It was a really cool facility there. And YWY is doing a phenomenal job with the garden and everything, but the Food Forest is going to be a pretty amazing addition to Wheat Ridge and something I hope maybe we can steal and have in District 3 at some point, too. Got some ideas. Karen's over there rolling her eyes at me. Sorry. And then I'm excited to get an opportunity to fill in for the mayor this weekend at Coffee with the Mayor, which will be at 9:00 AM at Vanola's on Saturday. So look forward to supporting that local business, and if you can find it, you should find it in Biden, Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Been a busy week and really a busy year in our city. I think we've got great things going on. I'm really excited about the projects that we were able to conclude funding on and look at those coming together in our community. I think it really, it really helps when, I appreciate Counselor Hulteen, helps when we work together, and we really got a visionary staff and a great council to work with and a great group of citizens that join us in the work that we do. I want to thank Mayor Protim Stites for handling Coffee with the Mayor. I'm off on a Dr. Cog board retreat. Dr. Cog's been very, very good to us, and I want to keep that relationship going. I was really fortunate this week, I think sort of on Tuesday evening, I think, yeah, it wasn't Monday, but maybe Tuesday, to go to the Airese, Arvada Wheat Ridge Service Ambassadors to Youth Annual Recognition for kids who, kids that are in school, junior and senior high school in our county that struggle with some issues, but they face those, they overcome those, and they're headed on a really positive path. So I want to congratulate all the students that were recognized at that event. There were award winners, there were scholarships given, and I think it was really a great, a great opportunity to see the best of the young people that are really coming, or some of the best of the young people that are coming into our community. On Friday, I was honored to be able to attend the Golden Rotary Ethics and Business Award in Golden and at a wonderful luncheon. And really want to congratulate Colorado First Foundation for winning the nonprofit Enterprise of the Year. Really, the work that they do in our community is deep and strong and rewards all of us here, both the recipients and those that are able to give and support that organization. So congratulations to them. And next Sunday is Mother's Day. Please remember your mothers. We have a lot of wonderful mothers in town.